This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South 5th Avenue on January 3, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphone, and assistive listening devices are available. Chief, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Berlin-Mentler.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Borough Attorney Shamir.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovere.
This is a very special night for us in several ways. First of all, I’m delighted to see so many of our men and women and their families in blue. And as someone mentioned, the beards really make you look different guys. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of installing our newest police officer, so I’m going to ask Michael Puchas to join me up front. And Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, will you also join me, please?
Sure.
So, this is Michael Puchas, our newest officer. Very happy to have him, proud to have him. He’s been an officer for two years in two other jurisdictions. He’s been an EMT professionally for six years. He’s a young man with a long career ahead of him. He just finished the Labor Academy, which certifies him as a full police officer this start of his career. We’re very excited for him to grow here, and I’m excited to see what he can do.
Okay. Mrs. Barron.
I’m here.
Hi, Michael Puchas.
Hi, Michael Puchas.
Do solemnly swear, or.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all duties.
Of the office of Highland Park Police Officer.
Of the office of Highland Park Police Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Police Chief Abrams, would you like to bestow the commendations?
The awards?
The awards.
Yes. And so, tonight, end of the year, to reflect on what’s happened over the last twelve days, three months. And we go over calls, memorable instances, times where officers really show up. We pick a couple out, be recognized, so they know that we’re watching and we appreciate what they do. Not just the police department. Sorry, thank you. Not just the police department, but the people in the town as well. It’s my distinct honor tonight to offer two different awards to three officers. So Sergeant Wyszkowski, Officer Giles, Officer O’Lara Jr., can you please come up? So in late July of 2018, these three officers responded to a call for service in town at an apartment building. It was a suicidal male armed with a handgun. It’s one of the worst calls we can go to. Somebody that has nothing to live for, armed with a weapon, and we have to respond and try to help this person. As they got there, they approached the floor he lived on, and as they got to the landing, they were confronted by the individual they were looking for. He threatened him. He kept his hands behind his back. He advanced towards them. He told them he was going to do awful things to them. They held their ground, and they tried to talk to this person, tried to get him help. Officer Giles, on her own volition, came down a flight of stairs, ran to a separate flight of stairs, so she could get behind this person and see. She saw he was in fact holding a black object behind his back. She could not determine what it was. The scene started to deteriorate. Knowing that they had to do something quickly before this ended in tragedy, Officer Giles tackled what she believed to be an individual armed with a handgun. Soon as she made contact, Officers Wyszkowski and O’Lara Jr. came in and made contact as well, and were able to secure this person, get this person the help that they needed with nobody being injured seriously. Because of that, I’d like to award these three officers with a Meritorious Service Medal. Meritorious Service Medal is awarded for actions that are hazardous to the officer, puts them in danger of life and limb, and also prevents injury or death to a third party. I’m very, very proud to have these officers working with us, and the restraint and the thinking that they had that night under that tense situation is exemplary. Thank you. Officer O’Lara and Officer Giles are getting the second award as well. They have a reputation in the department for catching all the hardest calls, and they do a really, really good job handling them. The second is a lifesaving award. In early February of this year, there was a pretty bad fire on Montgomery Street. These two officers were working. They responded to the call and immediately were confronted with a three-story apartment building full of smoke. Without hesitating, they went right inside and started knocking on doors to get people out, while the fire department set up outside to start to fight the fire. They continued to work apartment by apartment, knocking on doors, getting people out of the building, as the conditions got worse and worse. It got to the point where they couldn’t see each other. They finally made it to the apartment where the fire actually started. The door was unlocked, slightly open. They tried to finish opening the door to get inside, and they couldn’t. Something was blocking. They quickly realized it was the unconscious person who lived in that apartment. Time went on. The fire got worse. The smoke got worse. They were eventually able to open that door, grab this individual, and bring that person outside. They attempted to go back inside to find more people before they were stopped by members of the fire department and told they needed treatment for their own injuries, for smoke inhalation, before they could go back inside. Completely selfless act, they put the safety and the lives of the people in this borough, specifically a person who was in grave danger of the fire, way above their own safety. They didn’t think about their families at home. They didn’t think about what could happen to them. They only thought about the people in this town and how they could help them. Because of that, I’m very proud to offer them both, or them both, the lifesaving award. This is just two examples of what officers do all the time. These are extreme examples, sure, but that thought process, the idea of others before the self, that’s the embodiment of what we do and what we strive to do in Highland Park. I’m proud of all of my officers. They all do great work every day. If you see them on the street, say hi, say thank you. They’re here to help us. They want to go out in the community. They want to make those connections. Stop, talk to them, listen to their stories. They’re interesting. Thank you.
And before we go too much.
We have refreshments outside if we want to take a 10-minute break.
Just one second. Before we go any further, I just want to take a moment. I see Mr. Josh Przansky is in the audience today, or he was. Josh, I just want to note that Josh organized, as he does, I don’t know how many years, food and dinner for the officers that are on duty on Thanksgiving evening, and I want to thank you for doing that, Josh. The folks who contributed to the meals include the following synagogues: Agudeth Israel of Edison Highland Park, Congregation Ahavith Achim, Congregation Ateris Shlomo, Congregation Etzer Chaim, Congregation Ohavemeth, Congregation Oratora, Kal Chasidim of Highland Park, and the folks at Lot 27. So I just want to recognize the folks who recognized all of our officers and wanted to make sure that they knew they were being thought of on Thanksgiving evening as they were doing their work to protect us. So, thank you, Josh. And now, in order to celebrate the appointment of our newest police officer and the heroics of our team, please join us for some refreshments in the hallway, and we’ll take a five-minute break. Thank you. Okay. We’re back to business here. Okay, we’re going to do our council reports, and this time, Stephanie, I’m going to start on your end of the table.
Sure. Mayor, I have the shortest, nothing to report tonight for the first time, Mayor.
No holiday party?
What? We have another meeting still, 19th.
Seventeenth.
Okay. Me?
No.
She’s done.
Yeah, you go next.
Okay. Sorry. Just a couple announcements. Tomorrow at 12 noon at the Community Center, Unity Bank is going to be making their annual contribution to the Highland Park Community Food Bank. It’s something they do every year, and it’s something that greatly supports the efforts of the food bank. So we’ll be out there tomorrow at noon, assuming I get off of jury duty. Second of all, I’ve heard that there are snow shovelers needed, people who are interested in volunteering or possibly getting paid to help residents in the borough shovel their woks. The number to sign up is 732-819-0052, either to volunteer or there are some, you can name your price and see if anybody will pay it. So, on December 9, from 7:00 to 8:30, at the Reform Church, is the New Jersey Alliance for Immigrant Justice and the ACLU, and Highland Park’s own Harry Pagmanian will all be speaking about the importance of law changes to allow residents, to get, all residents to get driver’s licenses. It’s a really important issue. There’ll be some action that people can take, including signing petitions to other legislators about making driver’s licenses available for all. And then, later on this month, the American Jewish Committee’s Landmark Study on Anti-Semitism in America is an enormous study of, a large sample of Jews in America and their thoughts and attitudes about anti-Semitism, what it is, what it means, how it hurts. And on December 18, Avi Mayer, who is the AJC Managing Director for Global Communications, will be giving a presentation at the Highland Park Conservative Temple, Congregation Anshay Emmett, at 201 South 3rd Avenue. It’s open to the community. He’ll discuss in detail the survey, its results, and the pretty striking fact that a vast majority of Jews in America see anti-Semitism on the rise. Again, that is December 18, at 8:00 PM at the Highland Park Conservative Temple, 201 South 3rd Avenue. Everyone’s welcome. You can either call the temple or go to AJC’s New Jersey Office website. There’ll be an Eventbrite signup sheet. There’s no charge. It’s free to the public. It’s a great opportunity to learn on this topic. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, do you have a report?
A very brief one. As you can see, that earlier tonight, with the commendations that was given out to our three officers for their bravery and their services, above everything else to our town, that took up some time, and I also want to add a congratulatory note to them for all the hard work and dedication that they have provided us here in Highland Park in keeping our residents safe from fire, to those who are highly distressed during an attempted suicide situation. They were able to get this person much-needed help, and when someone is in despair such as that, that’s what they need, and they acted bravely and made sure that this person received the help and did not commit any harm to themselves or to any of the officers. On another note, the fire department had their open house. It was a big success. I stopped by for a little bit, and there were families over there, you know, learning about fire safety and what to do, what not to do. They had a lot of demo trucks out. They had their gears, and the kids really enjoyed it. The kids and family that I saw at the time, they had a good time. As we move into the colder weather, our Code Blue is now in effect, and anyone, Code Blue is a service that’s provided to those who may need help during the cold weather if they don’t have a warm place to go or they don’t have heating in their homes. So Code Blue is in effect here in Highland Park. It’s at the Community Center. However, you must call the police department, and for any questions you have, they’ll give a number, and they’ll tell you what time and who is the coordinator. So we do have a coordinator. His name is Amos, and there’s a phone number that can be had from the police department, and they’ll provide you that information. Reach out to him, and it’s been staffed by volunteers from the community, and just want to say huge thanks to all the volunteers who are supporting the Code Blue to making sure that our brothers and sisters are safe in time of need and when they’re most vulnerable. And with that, I want to just remind everyone, as the weather changes and as it gets darker, it’s very hard to see folks walking in the streets, so please utilize the sidewalks as much as possible. Where there is a sidewalk, please utilize it. Be very careful, but using the sidewalk and not the street will keep us all safe. With that, everyone, stay warm and stay safe. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I just wanted to get a clarification on the Code Blue. The Code Blue is issued by the county, correct?
Yes, Code Blue is issued, that call, that decision is made by the county, and it’s followed through by the National Weather Forecast, and they see what kind of weather is coming in, and when it gets to a certain degree, then that’s got called from the National Weather Forecast, then it passed down to state level, then from state level to county, and then the county advises when that we need to put those calls or put those volunteers in place and make our facilities available.
And my understanding is that the last person accepted in the evening, the doors close at 9:00 PM?
The doors, it’s open at 7:00 PM. The final call is at 9:00 PM. Everyone, because the facility is a multi-use facility, we have to have everyone out by 7:00 AM in the morning, so our Department of Public Works can go in and clean and get the facility ready for the next day. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we’re seeking everyone to cooperate with this as we move forward.
Thank you. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one item I’d like to report on. On Saturday, December 14, and Sunday, December 15, there will be a children’s book sale at the Highland Park Public Library to raise money for our library. Our residents owe a debt of gratitude to resident volunteer Khagit Mono, who is spearheading the fundraiser. I encourage all residents to try to take some time to attend the sale, to peruse and buy some good books, and support our library. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just a brief one, just to build on the Code Blue update that Councilwoman gave. I wanted to also acknowledge the real team effort to pull it together. We have interfaith communities in town. We have the borough staff from Public Works to the police department to community services all pulling together to make it work, because this is the first year we’re doing this in the Community Center. So that’s what’s the real difference here this year. And we are looking for volunteers to help staff the overnights, and if you’re interested, you can reach out to amoscaly@gmail.com. A-M-O-S-C-A-L-E-Y at gmail dot com. He’s with the Reform Church of Highland Park, who’s helping coordinate the volunteer component of the effort. So I just wanted to make sure that’s something that you wanted to be added to the call list and to pitch in and help out. It would be most appreciated, and we’ll be getting flyers out and promoting that further. The only other thing, since Councilwoman Wolkowitz wasn’t here, I wanted to be sure everybody was aware that the Planning Board will be hearing the master plan reexamination, and that’s the blue one, and the land use element on December 12 at their regularly scheduled meeting. This is where they’re formally hearing it, and there will be public comment, and the hope is they’ll move forward with adoption at that meeting. The plans are available for inspection at the Clerk’s Office here in Borough Hall, as well as up on the website. So if you have been following that and are interested, I’d encourage you to come out and hear what’s being discussed and contribute your final thoughts before the documents finalize. That’s all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a couple of things. First, unfortunately, because of this predicted snowstorm, the Communities World AIDS Awareness Day event had to be canceled yesterday. I just want to make sure that the aid situation stays in the forefront of our minds. There are over a million people in the United States still living with AIDS today. So please, you know, keep in mind that this is not a disease that has been wiped out forever. Secondly, again, because Councilwoman Wolkowitz is not here, I want to remind everyone on behalf of Main Street Highland Park that on Sunday, December 22, they will be having their menorah lighting. I’m not quite sure of the time of the menorah lighting, so if anyone has that handy and can pass that over to me, that would be great. Anybody? Anyway, it’s the 22nd, which is a Sunday. I do have a couple of things I want to talk about that have been on my mind. You know, we all just came back from our Thanksgiving celebrations with our family or friends or both, and I, you know, I think it was a good time for us all to think about...
4:30 maybe.
Oh, thank you. Okay. The menorah lighting is at 4:30 on Sunday, December 22. Thank you, Councilwoman.
What about Kwanzaa?
That is on there as well.
Yeah, Kwanzaa is on the 26th, and that’s at Kinetics, and I’m not sure what time that is either.
Yeah, I have that.
Kwanzaa celebration at Kinetics.
It’s at 4:30.
4:30 PM at Kinetics on December 26. Please come out for that as well. So I want to talk a little about some things that have been on my mind that I want to share with all of you. One issue that has been repeatedly a part of the business of the governing body over the past several years has been concerns we all have about how fair and welcoming we really are as a community. We’ve grappled with perceptions of safety and equity, as well as considerations of the sensitivities of our diverse community and the decisions we made. In all cases, acting first through our boards, commissions, and committees, we seek to listen, to learn, and to take careful steps to improve the life in Highland Park for our entire community. These steps take some time, but let me assure you, we are actively addressing issues that concern the safety and peace of mind of each diverse group within Highland Park. To that end, I’m delighted to let you know that we recently held an afternoon brainstorming and planning meeting led by Ms. Elizabeth Williams-Riley of the American Conference on Diversity, involving over a dozen community leaders to consider ways to counter implicit and unconscious bias in town. The equity and plus equity and inclusion. And this session helped to clarify the difference between equity and inclusion. This is just the beginning of the important work we plan to undertake on this topic in the months ahead. And earlier this year, in response to concerns raised about anti-Semitism in our community, the Borough Council spent many, many hours over some months considering different variations of a resolution to condemn the increase in expressions of anti-Semitism in our borough. Regretfully, we could not come to a consensus on language that would allow us to move forward constructively. But that is by no means the end of our efforts in this area. In the past weeks, I’ve been working with a few people to draft a multi-phased strategy which encompasses social, educational, and programmatic activities to spur community building and forge a broader consensus for action. I plan to share more on this initiative in the months ahead as specific facts start to take shape. As many of you have said, Highland Park is not a bubble. We are faced with the same troubling issues of race, gender, ethnicity, religious tolerance, and inherent biases that the rest of America faces in 2019. But I have seen firsthand how we, as a community, can rally around one another, can accept each other’s sameness and differences. I saw this through your donations to HB Gives a Hoot, as well as the Community Food Pantry. I saw this through your support of our fair and welcoming community resolution. I saw this when thousands of dollars poured in for relief for the victims of the Christmas Eve apartment fire in the complex. And I saw this as recently as a little more than a week ago, when hundreds of residents of many different faiths filled the sanctuary of the Highland Park Conservative Temple, Congregation Anshay Emmett, for our annual interfaith Thanksgiving ceremony. This is the best of Highland Park. So we may argue about many different things, but in the end, I know that we have the capacity to listen to one another and to come together despite our differences of opinions, politics, beliefs, education, and economic backgrounds, as one fair and welcoming community. So we will continue to work on understanding our inherent biases, racism, anti-Semitism, and more. It will take some time, but I’m willing to invest my time. I hope you will join me. Thank you. Okay. Time for our public participation. I am going to remind anyone who wants to say something to please step up to the microphone, and you will have three minutes per person with a hard stop after 15 minutes. Is there any public comment? Okay. Then we will move on. Clerk, can you please report on advertising the Salary Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled “An Ordinance to Provide For and Determine the Rate of Compensation of Each Officer and Employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the Method of Payment of Such Compensation” was duly advertised for consideration of the 18th of December. 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 and the Method of Payment of Such Compensation" was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second. Okay, public hearing. Anybody want to comment on this? Okay. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject 1219-334 and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on introduction of water and sewer rate ordinance amendment to, for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 328 Sewer and Water, has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we move to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt items number 13 through 25?
Do we have public hearing on the last one?
That comes with the...
Right, first adoption, sorry.
There's a public comment about the water and sewer.
Yes, I asked for it when, when I...
No, we didn't ask for it on this one.
No, there is no. Because it's first reading. It's only, a public comment is on second reading?
It should be the same as the one over there.
I can't see. Okay.
She said, she said it was her mistake.
Okay. All right, then. May I have a motion to adopt the consent items number 13 through 25?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, public comment. This is three minutes per speaker and no final time till 9 o'clock.
So, sorry about that.
That's okay.
But I came around quickly. So...
Is that better?
It may be too far from her, is it possible?
No, there wasn't a green.
Oh, okay.
So, with regard to the ordinance that was just introduced, the water and sewer bill increase, I'll just preface this by saying I recognize that for a number of years, there was an error in the water bills and the amount needs to go up. I recognize that the amount does need to go up. I believe you discussed this at your last working session meeting. That was the first that, you know, I, being part of the public, had heard about, this new increase. And as acknowledged, it impacts a huge portion every, you know, pretty much everyone in the town. I'm wondering how the amount of the increase was finally determined. It didn't seem to be determined at the last meeting. And what public meetings did this discussion occur at in terms of the specifics of what the amount would be? I, the reason I bring this up is this is, this is something that is going to affect the whole town. And I, I believe as a member of the public that this is something that should be very transparent, very open in terms of how this number is, is determined, what the math was that went behind it. And I'm just wondering, you know, what, what was done in that area.
So I'm going to see, I know it was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting, was it? Which is a public meeting. And I know, Josh, you were not able to make that meeting. Stephanie, since you were there...
Yep.
And Elsie, do either of you want to talk to that?
And we also had discussed it when, I think Greg had the, when was that, maybe two months ago?
Right.
We had the presentation that, where we went in detail with the water and sewer. I don't know who was...
There were some members of the public here.
Yeah, yeah.
That was advertised as, as a special, special meeting?
Well, yeah, there was a work session advertised in, in this room. Do you want me to just roll, like, I, the, do you want me to answer?
Well, unless Stephanie or Elsie want to.
I didn't want to jump on somebody.
Yeah. Do you want the Borough Administrator to?
Oh, yeah, Terry, you can and I can comment as well, too.
Just to answer the first part of your point, this has been something that we identified a need for a minimum of a 10% increase as part of the recommendations. We brought in a consultant who happens to also be our CFO right now, but in the role as our utility consultant, to fund the improvements that we need to make in the infrastructure to help also stabilize rates over time, because we'll save money in the long run through some of these upgrades. We, in looking at it more, we're also looking at the, we basically identified a need to raise 15% more revenue. And that's how, that was based on a calculation of the capital, as well as the operating expenses that we're going to need in the coming year, especially to adopt our budget for the water and sewer department. We have to show the state that we are, we have the revenues coming in to meet the demands of the budget. So that was all discussed, both at this water and sewer dedicated meeting, as well as the last Finance Committee meeting last week, last week? I'm sorry, I'm like...
Last week and then the working session.
At a public meeting. And it has been something we've been talking about. We, we authorize debt to, for these capital improvements. And these, this is part of what we, this is the raise we need in order to pay that debt.
So is this 15%? Is that what the number represents?
We basically, that's, that's what we looked at. I have some numbers here. I can, I can break them down. But yeah, we have a progressive rate structure. So it doesn't, you know, impact.
I wonder if you could also, I don't know if you have them with you, but the amount of dollar figures per year, that that amounts for an average household.
So, for, for, let me see if I have it. So we're talking about for our, kind of our, our minimum users, meaning they, they get charged a flat rate based on if you use under 799 cubic feet a quarter. That would be for that, for the year, $38.31, assuming that's what they, they collect in, which monthly would be about $3.19. So that's kind of probably some of our more vulnerable folks in there. And then in the, the middle group, kind of typical, you know, nuclear family type, we're looking at about $10 a month increase, give or take, you know, depending on your, that fluctuates with consumption. It's not a flat rate. Just to give you some dollars to compare it to.
So that's very helpful. Thank you. I would encourage you to make this, again, very transparent and, and open in terms of what these numbers would be. You know, the, the working session that I was at was at around, I think it ended after 10:00 p.m. You know, everyone was very drained. There weren't many people here. So in terms of kind of the definition of public meeting, it absolutely, these meetings meet them. But not many people are actually attending these meetings and, and aware of these. And, you know, again, I, I acknowledge that this increase is, you know, very necessary. But I think that this really needs to be made more public, not just in the definition of it, but in the, the action of it as well.
And I would like to mention, I did go in the Take Five after the last council meeting. And this is my opportunity to advertise. If you're not signed up for our emails, we, one of the kind of new products that we started was the post-council meeting Take Five, where we try to put a snapshot on some of the critical items that were discussed. So we're trying, but I appreciate the feedback.
I think also to Abby's point, you know, usually when we send out the tax letter, we, we explain the, the different rates, et cetera. So it might make sense for us to take the, that kind of approach to some kind of announcement that can go out to the public in general.
That's a fair point.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Ruth Bicard, 307 Magnolia Street.
Can, can...
Oh, hold on.
I'm going to fix the microphone for her.
It's a little taller than I am.
Thank you, Terry.
Great. Thank you. I have to go out in the evening. I have a four-legged little friend, and she needs to be walked. It's dark now by 5 o'clock, 5:00, 5:30. The sidewalks, it's been an issue with me since last summer when I, or last spring when I fell and broke my arm. That has not changed. The sidewalk has not been repaired on South, on South First. And now I see, since the cold weather has set in, most of the streets that I walk between Third and Fourth, down towards the park or towards the avenue, are in terrible disrepair. They're not level. I see children, little tots, walking with their parents and tripping and falling. Somebody, God forbid, is going to get hurt more so than I am. And I know that I'm going to live with a dysfunctional arm for the rest of my life. Not too many years. I'm not worried about that. You shouldn't either. But for other people...
I hope it's many, many years.
And street lighting. People don't put their porch lights on anymore. The bills are high. I understand it. But the pole lights are also dimmed. And we do have to go out after dark. There are people that are coming home from work after 5:00 in the evening. Who's responsible for that? I mean...
So Council President Phil George is not here tonight. So I can, I will answer some of your questions with the best of my knowledge of what he's been working on. So as far as sidewalks are concerned, there is going to be a sidewalk program initiated for 2020. It will be different from the last program. But I know he has been talking with his council committee about it. And I believe that there is a recommendation that was already submitted that we're going to be reviewing and putting... So the sidewalks will be addressed in 2020. As far as the lights are concerned, so PSENG owns the lights. And I know, Borough Administrator, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've been talking about an LED light program?
Actually, PSENG is putting, is, I'll say pitching to the Board of Public Utilities, which regulates them, to do an LED replacement program.
I don't know what that is.
Oh, there, I don't even know what LED stands for, but it's a very high energy efficiency type of light bulb. They also happen to be very bright. So they hopefully will save money, but also do a better job of shining down. I think for, for every person who thinks they're too dim right now, as soon as those LEDs go in, they're going to complain that they're too bright. But that, we'll cross that bridge when we come. They don't have approval to do that, but they control those lights. We rent from them. And when they're out, we pay. And when they're on, we pay. So I'd prefer them all to be on. So I'll use this also as an opportunity. There are a number of ways you can report poles that are out. Not you specifically, but the residents can through, through our online reporter concern on down to, through PSENG, through your utility account. So the long, that's my long answer of agreeing with the mayor. They are very hopeful to get these high-efficiency, bright lights in. But that's going to take some time to implement. And in the meantime, the best we can do is make sure that they're working. And when they're not, they are obligated to repair them. And we also can take a look at the shrubbery around them to make sure if there are burrow trees that are obstructing the light, we can trim them back.
It's not so much that, it's that the sidewalks are really in disrepair all over. Now, I walked here and I forgot to bring, I didn't forget to bring my flashlight. My, the batteries were dead. They still worked a couple of days ago, but then suddenly they were dead. And I just didn't want to go back in again and, and put new batteries in. So I just, I, I know the streets very well, but I walked very, very carefully and deliberately in some parts on the snow because I wouldn't slide there.
If you'd like a ride home, we can make sure we get that for you tonight.
Thank you. Whoever said it.
That's me. I'll drive you home tonight. So you don't have to walk in the dark.
I'll take you up on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bicard.
I'm quite sure Police Department will be, Chief would be happy to give you a ride home.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to take a brief five-minute recess. And then when we reconvene, we'll be down there for our work session. Five-minute recess, please.